I would like to welcome everybody to our Canyon City Council meeting. We also are streaming live on Facebook, so we welcome anyone who is watching on Facebook. If you have comments, that's probably the most efficient way we have right now to address those comments. We will take note of those. I am glad to have everyone here. I would like to thank Canyon City for really doing a pretty good job for staying at home and adhering to the state home mandate. I get contacted every day several times by different citizens who are very concerned for their health and their safety. And we really are doing that for them, for our healthcare workers and our first responders, and for our businesses that are closed right now. We need to be able to open back up as soon as we can, and the more we adhere to the state home standards, the better it will be. I was really proud of Canyon City residents when I had to go to Facebook today, and almost everybody was wearing face masks. And it did just feel a lot more safer to do that. And it's a little uncomfortable at first, but then it starts to feel pretty good too, knowing that we are more conscious of our health than those around us. So, thank you Canyon City for doing that. Is Frank able to get on yet? Are we?
He is not in the list. I'm going to go ahead and give him a call right now and try and walk him through it.
Okay, yeah, we'd like to see how they count. We're glad to have, it's good to see you. It's been a long time.
It has been a long time.
And we're all in this together, and so it's nice to kind of see everybody and recognize that. I am kind of hearing some feedback, so if you're not speaking, if you can mute your mic, that would be really helpful. And when you do want to speak, you can turn your microphone back on. That would be a good thing to do. But maybe wait just for a minute. It's time to call to order this council meeting. Cindy, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
So, go ahead and take the roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
I was here.
Councilmember Haquez. Captain Ed Quin. Councilmember Meidner.
Here.
Councilmember Reed. Councilmember B Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here. All right, we don't have anyone for the invocation today, but I would like to point out that there have been a lot of people praying for Canyon City and our leadership, and I think we really feel those prayers, and we appreciate those, and ask that we continue to be in prayers too during this time for our whole community. And we do, I have a pledge of allegiance, so we'll do that at home, if you don't mind. If you can please join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
All right, we did the best we could on that one. It was definitely the thought that gave it.
Hopefully it sounds better live.
Zoom is not ideal.
Councilmember Haquez is joined as well.
Before we start with our meeting, we do have a proclamation to give as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Start Believing Day. And I believe Rosalyn Walker is on with us, and if there's anyone else who wants to represent for the Sexual Assault Awareness Month, we will be here for you.
Hi, this is Rosalyn. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, we can, but if anyone's not speaking, please turn your mics on. All right, go ahead, Rosalyn.
Okay, I want to thank you guys for giving a little thought and attention to Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Start By Believing Day. We know that sexual violence and family violence does not slow down during a pandemic. If anything, we've been very busy responding to these crimes. There are a lot of persons who are trapped at the user, and this makes it more challenging for them to access services, but we are here for them. And I had to chuckle the other day when I heard Chief Harvey in one of the public addresses say, "Crime is a non-essential activity." And I couldn't agree more, but unfortunately, we know that it still happens around the world. And so, historically, we've always designated April National Sexual Assault Awareness Month as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Canyon City as well. And last year, we had our very first Start By Believing Day and Start By Believing campaign, and we would like that going again this year and have a second annual Start By Believing Day, recognizing the importance of lending an empathetic ear when one of our friends, family, or neighbors discloses to us that they have been or are being abused. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rosalyn. We really appreciate the representation you give to our community and the great care that you give to those who have gone through the trauma of sexual assault. For the proclamation, it's Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Start By Believing Day. Whereas the city of Canyon City shares a critical concern for victims of sexual violence and a desire to support their needs for justice and healing. And we do sexual violence in our community. And whereas the Canyon City Police Department and the St. Thomas More Hospital forensic nurse examiner program receive over 60 reports of sexual assault every year. And whereas current statistics tell us that one in three residents of Colorado will experience sexual assault, which is nearly twice the national average. And whereas the current estimates suggest as few as one in five sexual assaults will be reported to law enforcement, and less than 3% will result in the conviction and incarceration of the perpetrator. And whereas research documents that victims are far more likely to disclose their sexual assault to a friend or family member. And when these loved ones respond with doubt, shame, or blame, victims suffer additional negative effects on their physical and psychological well-being. And whereas April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the United States with the goal of raising public awareness about sexual violence and how it impacts every person in our community and educating communities how to prevent it. And whereas the Start By Believing Public Awareness Campaign, a program to end violence against women internationally, is designed to improve the responses of friends, family members, and community professionals so they can help victims to access supportive resources and engage the criminal justice system. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Canyon City that they support Sexual Assault Awareness Month and the Start By Believing Public Awareness Campaign, and do hereby declare April Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Monday, April 6, 2020, to be Start By Believing Day in Canyon City. And that is dated this day, the 6th of April, 2020. So, thank you, Rosalyn, and to your team as well. We now have a citizen's request to speak to council. And Ryan, Ida, and Cindy, have we had any pre-requests to speak to council?
I have not received any. Cindy, how about yourself?
I have not received any.
Okay, and so as we, if we don't get any comments on Facebook about announcements that are things that need to be said, we will be looking at those comments on Facebook as we go through our agenda and our items on the agenda as well. So, we can definitely hear from the public as well. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move over to council member announcements. And something that I would like to do, just because I haven't seen you guys for a really long time, and I think it's important, when I want to hear from each of you, but also for our community to know that we were affected by the COVID virus and the impact of the state. What you're doing and how it has impacted your and changed your life, if you wouldn't mind just sharing a little bit. And so, Jim, would you mind starting?
I have nothing special, other than we need to continue to do our best to keep our sanity and to be calm. And obviously, the biggest factor in this whole thing, as everybody's mentioned, is a person-to-person contact. And I know that's very difficult for us, but that's a thing we need to try to do for the next couple of weeks is to minimize the contact issue. And apparently, the face mask issue for those people that are not showing signs originally, obviously was something they didn't think was a factor, but now they're realizing that is a factor. So, those of you that are unculpable with that, I think my suggestion is, is I was originally, but I mean, once you put your mask on and you go out and you see hundreds of people with masks on, it becomes more of a norm than an abnormal. So, I just suggest people to do everything you can to help prevent the spread and to continue to be available to reach out to people that are in need.
Thank you, Jim. Dolly?
Sorry, trying to unmute. Um, so, this is a whole new mindset for all of us. It's very strange to have to stop and think before you leave the house. Kind of prepare yourself as you leave the house. I just rub my nose without thinking. We touch our faces, we don't realize it until we do it. So, it's just a mindset of really being conscientious about what's going on around you. And some things that I'm doing are reminding my kids, oh, my gosh, I'm such a nag. That's all I do all day is nag, nag, nag. But, you know, I want to make sure that they're safe. I want to make sure that they're keeping other people safe. Those are things we teach in preschool. Keep yourself safe, keep other people around you safe. And that's what we really need to be doing right now. Some other things we're doing is I have a crate that we're bringing our groceries home in. And each time we bring them in, we wipe them down, and then we sanitize the crate. We went for a bike ride yesterday, and we wore our masks. It was hot, but we wore our masks on the trail. My 11-year-old wasn't happy, but it was either wear the mask or stay at home. So, she wanted to go, so she wore the mask. You know, just thinking every time you do something, you know, how is this going to impact other people? And that's a tough place to be, but that's where we're at right now. So, that's what we're doing.
Thank you, Dolly. And Mandy?
So, some of the things that I'm doing, Dolly mentioned a lot of them, but also, of course, working remotely, setting things up so my team can work remotely. Homeschooling my eight-year-old, lots of us are doing that together right now. So, that has been a pretty interesting experience. Some other things I'm doing just to be able to continue to help slow the spread is just being able to, you know, not taking my kiddo to the grocery store with me. Just one of us running in and running out, utilizing delivery services when I can, but still making sure that we're taking drives. We didn't saw the bridge and the light show, but getting outside as much as we can. We're really fortunate to be in a rural area where we're able to still comply and observe the social distancing requirements that we need to, to stay safe, but be able to not be cooped up in tiny apartments where we can't go outside and do a lot of things. So, I'm just really focusing on togetherness and being an encouragement to one another. There's a lot of people right now that are really just struggling emotionally through all of the aspects of this. And so, I think one of the best things that we can all be doing is just coming alongside one another and encouraging each other. So, I'm trying to work really hard with that as well.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'd like to echo the comments that everyone else has made. It really is important for us as a community to look after each other and to take care of our own and take care of ourselves. It, what we have to guard against, I think, the idea that as things get better, and there are some indications that things are getting better. For instance, the number of new cases has steadily fallen here for the last four days, and we're at the lowest number of new cases that we've been at since 11 days ago. That's really good news, but we have to guard against being seen positive signs like that as permission to go ahead and stop the social distancing and relax on some of the precautions that we're all taking. So, I think it's really important to hold fast, continue on with what we're doing, and we'll get through this.
Absolutely. Thank you, John. Brandon Smith.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, so obviously, my normal was significantly affected with not being able to coach or to work. So, I, on top of helping my wife and my mother-in-law homeschool our children, I also got a job stocking grocery shelves so that I don't lose my insanity completely. But other than that, I'm working graveyard shift, so I kind of sleep during the day. So, I just woke up in time for the meeting, so.
I'm glad to have you here.
Yeah.
And I think it's important to know that there are a lot of community members making some pretty major sacrifices right now with having to close their doors. It is really tough. Is Frank on?
Yes, I am.
Frank, we'd like to hear from you too. How has the COVID been affecting you and your family?
Well, one thing I want to say is let's just use common sense, okay? And I'm grateful for you both that can get out there and go for a bike ride, get out there and go do this and that. You know, because there are other people that have other complications in their life with regards to self. My wife, because of her illness, her bike riding and safety, getting in the car on a nice sunny day and driving up the highway to Pleville just to be out so she can get some sunlight and coming back. Because she can't go out there and walk anywhere, talk to anybody anywhere, but we're grateful that we're able to do that. So, use common sense, be grateful for what you have and what you can do. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Haquez. I'm Tim Dennehy. Would you like to say anything?
I would just like to say it's great to be back. It's, I still have a little ways to go. I'm going to have at least two or three more surgeries just on my throat because I had such an issue, but it is absolutely great to be back in Canyon. And, you know, this is, this is, has to be a very quiet time for me because of just how things have been. But, you know, it's just great to be back, and, you know, I have a lot of catching to do, but, you know, and I'm looking forward to the day when I can just sit and, you know, just with everybody and just get life going again.
And it is really awesome to have you back, Tim. And maybe the state, one blessing from the stay-at-home order is that if we weren't forced to stay at home, we'd probably all be mobbing your house right now to come give you a great big huge hug. A few lots of well wishes, so.
Yeah, and that is, and, you know, we're trying to do our best. We don't let anybody into our home. People do come stop by, but we keep them about eight feet apart from us. So, it's, and then, like I said, they had me scheduled for more surgeries this week, or actually next week, but because of, you know, this COVID, it's, we're on hold. So, life is good. Life is really good right now.
Awesome. Well, good, Tim. It's awesome to have you back, and it's awesome to hear from each and every one of you. So, both to you and to the city, you know, keep staying strong. This next week's going to be a little rough. We're feeling cabin fever at our house a bit with the kids. And my husband's also out of work. He had to close his doors except for emergencies for dental, and that's rough. Being at work is, this is a happy place. He loves going to work every single day, and not being able to do that has been really killing him. And it's tough on the changing the family dynamics too, and the, you know, and the feelings for where that's going to put us in our future financially and stuff. So, we're, I think the point to this exercise is that we're in this together, not only as a council, but as a council, we have empathy for our citizens as well, that we're not above the consequences of the COVID-19 virus that we all are working together. And again, reiterate to stay safe and be calm and be respectful to the others and their needs to be protected from the spread of the virus. Let's open up to any announcements. Do we have any announcements from council members?
I raised my hand.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Uh, we do have a meeting on Wednesday. John normally announces that. Five o'clock, and it's going to be a Zoom meeting.
Thanks for that, Jim.
What do you say?
I think all of everybody these days are living on Facebook, Instagram, some kind of social media. Announcements are going out consistently, so it's really hard to announce something that's already been out there. There's been so much. I just, I just want to hit on something, though, that a couple of council members had talked about. First of all, what Frank was saying about this affects all of us differently, and Brandon too, and you as well, Mayor. This affects us all so differently. And I think now is a time for us to be, to use a little bit more compassion in our day-to-day living. You know, some of us are anxious and on edge. Some of us are, doesn't faze us. Some of us are somewhere in between. And I think it's really important to understand now more than ever that we're human beings and not just somebody behind a mask. So, when you're out in public, you know, remember that the person standing next to you has a different struggle than you. And they may be struggling to buy those groceries. And you may look at it as, oh, you're not buying essentials because you're only buying five or six items. You don't know. You don't know how much they have to spend at the grocery store. Just be compassionate, and I'm saying that to our, not just our community, but to the state, to everybody, because I've seen some people get downright ugly, and now's not the time to do that. So, it's just, that's my announcement, my public reminder. That's all.
Thank you. It's well taken. I do want to point out that some of the, one of the things that we're working, investing a lot of time into is the COVID-19 Business Leader Task Force. We're really trying to reach out to our business community to help support them and get them through short-term and long-term. And that's one of the best places to go if you want to be connected to that task force is to go onto Facebook. We have a Canyon City COVID-19 Small Business Resource. And that, we have tons of links to webinars, to classes you can take to help your business survive through a crisis, as well as links and explanations for applying for some of the state grants and loans that are available. And also, just outreach and lend support and good ideas. As we've had photographer willing to do free photography of menu, of food items for menus to post online, people willing to create websites for free. And we're also working for some other marketing campaigns that will help promote our businesses as well. So, that's something we've been working really hard on and among a lot of other things as far as just keeping our city safe. Now, one announcement, I should probably make two, and I see that on Facebook, there's a comment about if we could do some, a police drive-by for, that's something special for seniors. And that actually is possible. Our Canyon City Police Department, they, if you just call the regular number, not 911, but the regular police number, and you are, if you're 80 years old or older, or if you're a child having a birthday during the stay-at-home quarantine, they'll come by with their squad cars and wish you a happy birthday or come say hi to you. And so, that is just something that's really fun that our police department's doing. It's gotten a huge traction with our community and then the news media. It's just so much, so positive and so fun and totally memorable. So, there's tons of examples of the community really reaching out and doing some cool stuff to help each other out. On Saturday, the Vineyard Church is promoting everyone to go do chalk art in front of your house on your sidewalk or your driveway and use chalk art to send messages of hope to our community. And that's something fun that we can all participate in as well. All right, let's go ahead and move. Is there anything else from city council members before we move on?
This is Brandon. I just had one thing I wanted to mention before we move on. I just wanted to send a big shout-out to Randy and Kim Smith. I believe their business is just stitching. Randy had told me at last count, they had made over 900 masks before the governor's decree to wear them, and they still had about 150 that they were going to make with the materials that they had, and that they were also going to be sending out tutorials on how to make them. Their only ask was that you please don't sell them, if you're going to make them, give them away.
Yeah, they're amazing. That they're totally on top of that. So, thank you for reminding me about that, Brandon. All right, let's go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Ryan, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Item 8A is the approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting on March 2nd, the special city council meeting on February 20th, the, and March 10th, March 19th, and the general government meeting on March 4th. 8B appoints Chris Jenkins to the Canyon City Historic Preservation Committee. 8C awards bid 1820 stormwater facilities maintenance to Moon Rock Landscaping, not to exceed 150,000. Award, 8D awards bid 2020 Kalesaki Mule, UTV, Fremont Motorsports of Florence, not to exceed $10,898.50. 8E ratifies award bid 2120 for sodium chloride to international dioxide in the amount not to exceed $14,180. 8F awards bid 2220 asphalt roller to Ferris Machinery, and in the amount not to exceed $52,500. 8G awards bid 2320 traffic paint color paint company in an amount not to exceed $5,000. Award bid, or 8H awards bid 2420 cell emitter credentialing system to Midwest Card and ID Solutions in an amount not to exceed $7,447.52. 8I authorizes the city administrator to sign a contract, amendment one, for this Highway 115 pedestrian improvements. 8J authorizes the mayor to sign a Department of Local Affairs grant in the amount of $10,000 to assist with the Colorado Challenge Program. 8K authorizes the mayor to sign the Department of Local Affairs grant in amounts of $153,250 for the Canyon City Master Plan. 8L authorizes the mayor to sign a letter to support Rocky Mountain PBS and their proposed ninth season of Colorado Experience. 8M declare vehicle surplus and approve of disposal of a 2007 Chevrolet Impala. 8N declare vehicle surplus and approve of disposal of a 2004 Mercury Marquis. 8O declare electronic equipment surplus and approve of disposal slash donation of equipment. 8P ratify expenditures to Langston Concrete in an amount of $18,000 for emergency work at the pump station. 8Q ratifies the monthly budget sum. 8Q ratifies the monthly budget summary from last month. 8R ratifies and receives a file of list of bills for March 16th. And 8S receives and files a list of bills for this council meeting April 6th.
Are there any additions or corrections?
I got a question.
All right, we'll open up to questions. Jim Meister?
My first one is. On the PBS thing, is that for 2020 season or 2021? The, the, the information in the packet mentioned the fact that I guess they're interested in doing some, some acknowledgements with Canyon City history. Just be aware that in 2021 is the 150th anniversary of the territorial prison. And I'm not sure where that fits on their whole scale and scheme of things, but at least statewide, that's a significant date. I have another one if.
Go ahead.
Question. On item R for the gateway, it looks like we're doing 141,000. Is that done or is how much more we got to do on that? First, is that the first phase?
So, so on, on the gateway signs, that's the first payment for the work that's been completed. I will have an update on the gateway signs during my administrative report.
Okay.
Any other questions from council members? John Hammack?
And I saw Dolly had her hand up too. The, on the finance report, Ryan, just to, just to note that. It's showing that we've, that 0.08% of the fiscal year has passed. I think that's supposed to be 8%. A 0.08% is like seven hours. I think she means the whole month. And then when we have bids and we're quoted a price per pound or a price per gallon, is that always freight on board? So that there are no further shipping costs associated with those bids?
Shipping is usually a separate, separate line item, but it should be included.
Well, my concern is that if, if there are, for instance, if we, if we're getting something out of Colorado Springs versus Arkansas. Shipping costs could be substantially different and I just wanted to make sure that, that, that we're, we've got apples to apples comparison on the, on the cost.
Yeah, yeah, I will double check, but typically when we have those bids, there's this estimate for shipping that we consider as part of those bids.
Okay, another comment, and it's specific to the item F, the asphalt roller. One of our criteria was the hours on the unit. And only the hours for the unit that we chose were, were listed, unless I missed it. And, and if there's a criteria that we're using to differentiate, differentiate between two bids, it would be good if that criteria was listed for all the bids or both bidders in this case. And then I also have a question on the paint specification, on the paint, on the striping. And my question is, is there a specification for the paint that the bidders are, are complying with?
Yeah, it's a, it's a specific paint. There is, there are specifications that they do have to comply to.
Yeah, okay. And I was just concerned that, that we, that would, once again, we're keeping things apples to apples. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
All right, Dolly?
You're still muted, Dolly.
Okay, can you hear me now? My item, or my question is on item C. I was under the impression that this work in the stormwater facilities maintenance on, on clearing ditches and making sure that water was flowing freely and the trash and all that was out of there. It's going to be done by some hired-on staff and not bid out. Am I incorrect on that? When we, I thought that when we did the. When we talked about, we were going to look at hiring staff on to do this.
Yeah, this, you know, includes mowing, weed control, tree cutting, you know, things that hired-on staff won't necessarily be doing. The hired-on staff will be running the back truck on a full-time basis, so it'll be more about cleaning out the, inside the culverts. Some of this is. This, this type of maintenance work is the outside facilities, not necessarily in the culverts, as I mentioned. I know we have Adam on the line. Adam, is there anything you'd like to add to that? Or not?
So. Is this amount in addition to our stormwater amount or is, is, does this, does this?
Yeah.
Inside that?
Yeah, this, this will be in addition to the hired-on staff, but again, you have, you also have to remember that that staff's not going to get put on until later in the year. And it might not even be until next, you know, early 2021. So, you know, we, we still have to bid out the back truck and then. You know, delivery on that back truck could be anywhere from six to nine months.
Yeah, the, the back truck and the two new full-time employees, that's an expansion of service. So that's above and beyond what we normally do with this annual maintenance. And also above and beyond what the public works guys can do.
Okay, so this, this is normal day-to-day stuff that typically gets taken care of.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Council member Meisner, did you have something to add?
Hey, Dolly and everybody, Ryan, and we, we've been doing that for a couple of years, have we not? It's just that we're changing, we're actually changing the vendor. My only concern there is, is it seemed to me like there was substantial difference. Between our previous expense and the new projected expense and I assume that. In that whole process, there's going to be some way of making for sure that those people are going to be able to do the same quality of job for a whole lot less money.
Yeah, Jim, so these folks, they actually worked on the project early on as a subcontractor when we started in 2007. The only other bidder was the one that's had the bid for the last number of years, almost 10 years now. And what it looked like were his, his prices, he was just basically doing an inflationary price based on what his original bid was. So I think the price is good.
Dolly, did you have some more comments?
No, that was it. Thank you.
I can't see if Frank or Brandon or Tim are raising their hands. Do either of you have any comments or questions?
No, don't worry. When I want to ask a question, I'll let you know. Thank you for checking though.
I'm good too. I'm just kind of listening for right now.
Okay.
There's nothing that jumped out to me. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council?
At this point, we're only looking at the consent agenda?
Right, so we, yeah, just the consent agenda. So we have, we do need to adopt the consent agenda in the agenda and so I will take a motion. Jim?
Well, before we, before we do that, I would suggest that we, on the regular or discussion agenda. That we potentially move item 15 to 12A so that we can maybe get that issue addressed and then Matt could go on his way.
Would you like to make a motion?
Mark, Matt, did he hear?
Second. Second that.
We still need a motion.
Okay, Jim, make that motion.
Me? Mayor and council, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read. And we're modified, right? And we move item 15 to 12A, which means it would proceed 12. On the discussion agenda.
Okay, now I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Then I'll ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hakev?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay, so that is passed and we'll move on to number nine, the administrators' reports and I'll turn that over to Ryan. Thank you.
All right, so Mayor and members of council, I, I'm not going to read through both of these administrators' reports in the interest of time, but I do want to let council and the public know that. We're taking precautions very seriously here at the city. Our buildings are currently closed through the 10th, you know, which is the end of this week, but if there is another. If there is an extension to the stay-at-home order, we do plan on extending the closure of our buildings as well. We are taking extra precautions as well with our critical facilities. We, we've seen buildings that don't normally get people from the public showing up. You know, like our public works and our maintenance facilities, people have shown up. So those, those buildings are locked down even tighter than they were before. And then with our water treatment plants, we have moved to critical staff only, so the operators are working up there. And then we have our maintenance workers who are on call at home right now. And then we're, we're also bringing them in on an as-needed basis to perform regular maintenance tasks. So, you know, we, we're doing what we can, given the circumstances, to make sure that, you know, we're going to continue to provide safe drinking water to the public and. Ensure that all of our staff is safe as well. A couple other updates. Rick Harmon has joined the city as the new economic development manager. He's jumped straight in with both feet, trying to get. Our businesses up to date on the CARES stimulus package and what that means. And we're continuing to, to work and try and get out to the business community. We are working on standing up a hotline. With some of our library and museum staff that are currently home because we have shuttered buildings to help them, they'll, they'll be working to help connect our businesses to the resources that are available. For those employees who work for the library and museum who are not currently, you know, helping with the hotline, but, and, and, you know, we, we do have some employees who are going in, helping with some inventory. On a rotating basis. We also have Adam from the library, he's doing Storytime on Facebook. We have some of our museum collections being sent home with employees so they can catalog them. And then they're returning those on a rotating basis, so we don't have too many people in the building at one time. So we're, we're continuing to work and do as much as we can, given circumstances. Mentioned the, Councilman Meisner asked about the gateway signs. We do have some concerns and we are working towards a possible termination of that contract. And then we would complete that work ourselves and, you know, it, it's taken far longer than it was supposed to. We, you know, we have liquidated damages at this point. And it just makes sense to severitize and complete the work ourselves.
And Jim, let me just, Jim has a question really quick, if that's all right?
Well, that answers my question in terms about the, what I'm going to call, I haven't seen the sign on the west side, but the sign on the east side, it's like one stone at a time. Maybe one stone a day. I don't know, but it's terrible.
And I will, I will say that I've had a citizen say that must, you know, that they're taking so long, it's costing us a lot of money because they're working so slow, but it's actually the opposite. We're liquidating the damages because they are being so slow. Ryan, can you tell us a little bit more what that's going to look like? For terminating the contract?
Yeah, so, you know, we're, we're, we're working towards terminating the contracts. We'll hold back any monies that have not been paid in case there are any. Potential claims for any of the subcontractors and, you know, we'll, we'll probably, you know, what we'll end up doing is hiring somebody to finish the work on our behalf. Adam, is there anything that you, you'd like to add regarding the signage? I, I know this has been a, a first for you. Actually Catherine does. She has something she'd like to add. Catherine, you're still on mute.
That, can you hear me now? Okay, I'd rather not discuss this in a public meeting because it's a legal issue that we're just beginning to start. And so I'm happy to talk about it in an executive session with you all, but I don't want to get into the details in a public meeting.
Okay, good point. I do have a question though about the wayfinding signs, because that's a different company and we haven't seen any movement on that. Either is that because of COVID-19 or is there other issues?
Yeah, we, we are seeing some delays because of that, but they, you know, they are working on their traffic control plan and we, we do plan on seeing some movement there as well here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Sure.
So, Ryan, thank you very much for that update and, you know, for, for a lot of really good work on the, on the COVID response. My question is, are, is, is city hall or city employees going about their duties masked or unmasked?
Currently, we, we are not doing anything masked. We do have employees, like our building department that goes, goes out into the field. They do have masks that they take with them and have started wearing. But as far as operations within the city buildings, we currently are not masked. We have taken other precautions like the, you know, social distancing. Majority of our staff here at city hall is working from home or working on a rotating basis. So we, we have very few people in the building at any given time.
Thank you.
Ryan, do you have more for your administrators' report?
No, at, at this time, I think I'll, I'll hand over the time back to, back to council and so we can move on with this agenda. It's a, it's a very large book right now.
Yeah, it is. I don't know about anybody else, but I, I died a little bit when I saw how huge it was this week. Like, oh boy. But, but we're glad to, to get, to take care of a lot of business, of course. Let's see, so we have the administrators' report and we're going to move on. To the public hearing and actually I am not opening the public hearing for items 10 or 11. We need to have those. A motion for each of those to continue until June 2020. And both of those items are for the urban renewal. We felt like with so much. Going on right now, want to go ahead and take that, Ryan? Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, it's, it's just item 10A and 10B. Item 11 will continue.
Okay.
Well, we, we will address 11. Yeah, 10A and 10B are what we would like to continue to May 18th.
And it looks like each A and B will need their own motion to continue. Due to this, you know, we've been really busy with COVID and it just makes sense to kind of wait and let things settle a little bit. Not just for us, but for the entities that we are negotiating. And Jim Meiser, do you have a question?
Catherine, I assume we need a motion to do that?
Yeah, so you're going to have a motion to continue item, and I thought, I'll just, and I could be confused. I thought 10A you were moving forward with tonight and 10B was being continued, but perhaps I have that incorrect. But either way, you need a motion to continue item 10A to May 18th, 2020, and then a motion to continue item 10B to the same date.
Jim?
Mayor and council, I move that we. Mayor and council, I move that we have a continuance for item ten A and ten B until May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. May eighteenth, twenty twenty.
So you want to do it in May instead of June?
Well, Ryan?
Ryan?
Yeah, based on some of the feedback from some of the developers that we're talking to, they are still looking to move some of their projects forward, and they would still like to see something happen sooner than than, you know, pushing it all the way to June. So I think at this point, it makes sense to go ahead and move it to the second meeting in May, and then we can revisit it at that point.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue the public hearing to May eighteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Cindy, can you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Dennehy. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockens.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion to continue the public hearing has passed by unanimous vote. We'll now go to item ten B. We'll also need to continue that until the same date, is that May eighteenth? So I need a motion to continue ten B.
Good, Mayor?
Yes.
Motion that we move item ten B to the meeting scheduled for May eighteenth, twenty twenty.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Then I call for a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockens.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Right, the motion has passed with unanimous vote. Now I will open up the public hearing for item number eleven, and that's for the seed's property minor subdivision. And that also has two parts, A and B, but I will turn that over to Ryan. Who do we need to-
Patrick Moore, ready.
Patrick, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Ryan, I have a PowerPoint. Can you hand over control of the PowerPoint for me?
Patrick, you should just be able to hit the share button on the bottom of your screen.
If I can find the share button, let's see, more. Okay, is that working now?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we are here to consider the matter of two land use requests for a property located at twenty-one forty and twenty-one fifty Pear Street. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from R-two medium-density residential to R-three high-density residential, and at the same time, the applicant seeks to subdivide this property by minor subdivision. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of North Orchard Avenue and Pear Street, just before Orchard Avenue curves westerly to intersect with Central Avenue. It's approximately one point one five six acres in area, or fifty thousand three hundred and fifty-five square feet. It is consistent, it has a consistently level grade relative to the surrounding streets. There are two structures which exist on the site. Each structure was constructed as a duplex rental unit, hence the two addresses for, assigned for this property. The construction of these units appears to date from nineteen forty-eight, which would have been prior to this property being annexed into Canyon City with the disincorporation of East Canyon in nineteen seventy-four. This area of Canyon City is characterized by large lots with relatively low density. Note how the building footprint on many of the surrounding lots is so minimized compared to the lot size itself. The site is predominantly surrounded by R-two medium-density residential zoning. A portion of the site at the southeast corner is bordered by an existing mobile home park. Given that R-two zoning is written such that it is intended to be more densely constructed than what is actually shown here, it appears the R-two zoning may have been applied anticipating future redevelopment of this area. It should be noted that R-three high-density residential zoning is not without precedent in this area. To the south, one lot removed from the subject property is an existing R-three zone, which accommodates multifamily residential structures proceeding southerly along North Orchard to the Canyon City hydraulic ditch. As indicated in the introduction to these land use requests, the subject property is currently zoned R-two medium-density residential. Although this use is consistent with surrounding zonings, the designation of R-two medium-density residential zoning in this area appears to have been made anticipating future redevelopment opportunities. Indeed, some of the nearby properties are exhibiting multifamily residential uses as legal nonconforming under the R-two zoning. The applicant is seeking to modify the zoning to R-three high-density residential. This would not only correct the existing legal nonconforming status of the property, it would allow for construction of additional residential units on site. When evaluated against the criteria for rezoning requests as specified in section seventeen point four zero, criteria two would appear to be relevant. The area for which this rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such a degree that it is in the public interest to encourage a redevelopment of the area. In the fourth quarter of twenty nineteen, the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments completed a housing needs assessment for Fremont County and Canyon City in particular. It found that there is a serious need for affordable and attainable housing in this region. As previously noted, the fact that the development of this particular part of Canyon City, specifically East Canyon, involved densities well below what the R-two zone district envisioned and would support, would seem to indicate that the redevelopment of this area has been anticipated. A change of zoning to R-three high-density residential would certainly encourage redevelopment of this area, which brings us to the second land use request the applicant has made for this property. The applicant has also sought to subdivide the property into three lots, calling it the Seed's Minor Subdivision. As proposed, two of the lots would incorporate the existing duplex structures. Each of these two lots would be eight thousand forty square feet in area, which exceeds the minimum seven thousand square feet for lot sizes for duplex in an R-three zone. It should be noted that the plating of these two duplexes onto their own lots would resolve an existing legal nonconformity for this property. Both of these lots would continue to have access via Pear Street, and the current use is not proposed to be changed. This would leave the undeveloped balance of the property to be set off as a separate lot. This proposed lot would be thirty-four thousand two hundred fifteen square feet in area. A lot of this size in the R-three zone district could permit up to eight dwelling units. However, no site plan has been filed for this proposed lot as of yet. At such time as a site plan is filed for this lot, it will need to demonstrate adequate site access and internal circulation for the number of dwelling units proposed, adequacy of parking based on the number of bedrooms per dwelling unit, building footprint layout which does not exceed forty-five percent coverage of the lot, utility connections to cert the proposed number of units to be created, and drainage management which complies with the city's requirements. However, as a three-lot configuration within the R-three zoning, this minor subdivision request meets the city's standards in that it is less than ten acres in overall size and proposes to create fewer than five lots. Beyond some red line correction to dedication language on the plat exhibit, the proposed subdivision can be considered for approval. Now, it should be noted that the planning commission did, conducted a public hearing on this request on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Following a public hearing on their own deliberate, and their own deliberations, planning commission cited the findings of fact concerning the city's jurisdiction to conduct a public hearing on the requested land use, these two requested landers' requests, before forwarding recommendations on both applications to council. Thus, regarding the rezoning request, on a unanimous vote, planning commission recommends that city council approve the request to rezone the property located at twenty-one forty and twenty-one fifty Pear Street from R-two medium-density residential to R-three high-density residential. This should be done by adopting ordinance six, series of twenty-twenty, by title on first reading, and setting the second reading for April twentieth. Also on a unanimous vote, planning commission recommends that city council approve the Seed's Minor Subdivision request, subject to the two conditions contained in the staff report. That would conclude the applicant's presentation, or the staff's presentation, as always. I'm happy to answer any question from council. Also present to speak on behalf of this project is the consultant Matt Koch from Cornerstone Engineering, and the applicant Chris McIntyre.
Okay, so we're open to any questions from city council. I can't necessarily see all of you, so if you have something, just speak up, and-
I got a question.
Okay.
Patrick, I can't imagine this not being the case, but my little map is very difficult to read, but I assume in lots two and three are in compliance in terms of size, boundary setbacks. It looks awful narrow.
It does look narrow, but remember, in R-three, it is a reduced setback compared to R-two, so they are still compliant.
Okay. Thank you.
Patrick, maybe could you unshare?
Unshare, certainly.
Any other questions from council? I see that Chris McIntyre is here as well to answer questions. It's his property.
Is he on?
Yeah, Chris is here. Do you have a question? Yeah, go ahead and turn your mic on, Chris.
My question isn't necessarily for Chris, but maybe it is. Do we do a survey or announcement to the surrounding neighbors that there's a change? That's probably-
Yes, sir, there were two, there were two forms of public notice that were put out. For planning commission, those two forms included mailings that were made to all property owners within three hundred feet and signs posted on the property. For tonight's council date, in addition to a sign posted on the property, there was a notice published in the daily record.
Thank you.
Chris, I have a question for you. Do you have any plans in the near future for that new lot that you're creating for high-density housing?
I'm a high school science teacher, and I have a handful of rental properties, and every year I get phone calls from new teachers.
Chris?
We may have lost Chris.
Yeah, Chris, we had a bad connection, so maybe if you could try and get back on, Chris, or go on, get on a telephone line, maybe? Chris, are you, are you there now? Matt, do you have anything to offer us about the subdivision while we try to get Chris back on?
Not really. You know, Chris's intent is to provide for housing for newer people to the community, teachers that are moving in. It looks like his, his video is maybe back on. Maybe he can explain it better now.
Yeah, sorry, Chris, you froze on us. You just started to talk about teachers.
Okay, you can hear me now?
That's good.
Moved closer to the router. I get phone calls every year from new teachers to the area, and they're looking for adequate housing, and I have nothing of all that I, that I manage. So I would love to see a teacher and young professionals housing group set up that's specific to encouraging people in the community to come and live. So that's my hope. I had honestly thought that I might be ready by August to have something available, but given the current status of the nation and whatnot, it probably is delayed about a year, but that's my hope.
Are you working with the school as well?
So Brian Van Iwarden is on the retract, attract and retention committee, and this would be something that the two of us were, were interested in trying to put in place.
I think there might be some other developers in the community that could be interested, and also, when you're ready to get started, come talk to us as well. There's not a lot that we can do as a city, but there are some things we can do to help make affordable housing, especially for teachers, a little bit more affordable to do. We'd like to be a part of that team and solution building.
Great.
Any other questions from city council? All right, then I'll go ahead and ask for a motion for item eleven A.
You need to close the public hearing first.
Okay, you are right. I will close the public hearing, and now I will call for a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor and council, I moved that we approve ordinance six, series of two thousand twenty on first reading.
Is there a second?
One second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, and I'll call. Is there any discussion? And I'll call for a vote, please.
Hold on, I do, I just want to, I just say thank you for investing in, in our community this way. It's so important that we have affordable housing and just more housing in general, especially when we're trying to bring and retain quality teachers to our area. We have a lot to offer, but we don't have a lot of homes for them to live in. And so I just want to thank you for investing in our community that way. Thank you.
All right, awesome. So now I will call for a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockens.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Right, the motion has passed, and now we're to item number eleven B, and that's the Seed's Property Minor Subdivision. And Patrick Orion, is there any more that needs to be said about that?
Planning commission did recommend approval with the two conditions, there are minor corrections to the plat exhibit in the staff report. We would recommend that you carry forward that same recommendation.
Will that need to be in the motion?
I would recommend you do include it in the motion, yes, subject to the two conditions in staff's report.
Any questions from city council? Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Well, first I will close the public hearing for
Yeah.
eleven B, and then I will take your motion, Dolly, and if you can include the planning commission's recommendations, that would be great.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item eleven B on the agenda with the staff recommend, the two staff recommendations from planning commission. Was that right?
It was right, and a second. Is there any-
I think we understood the motion, yes.
Okay.
Any discussion on the motion? Then I will call for a- Then I will call for a vote. Cindy, are you available to do the vote roll call?
Sorry. And before the roll call, who did the second? I did not hear it.
I did.
Thank you. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Beethneth?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Right, that too has passed by unanimous vote, and congratulations, Chris McIntyre. Let us know when you're ready to do business. We'd like, again, offer an opportunity to help make that happen for affordable housing for teachers. So I'm looking forward to that, to that day. We are now done with public hearings, and we're going to move on to item number 12A. That was originally number 15 on our agenda, and that is the consideration and adoption by title only of Resolution 11, series 2020, entitled "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Authorizing Participation in the Rural Jump Start Program." Ryan, I'd like to turn that over to you, if I may.
Absolutely. The Rural Jump Start Program is an economic development initiative that was put forward by the state several years ago, and it's a tool that helps attract unique businesses to Colorado. And they do that by waiving certain types of taxes, including companies' state income tax and even their employees' state income tax when that company either decides to relocate to Colorado or decides to start opening, open their business here in Colorado. And we have Mark Bellantoni with the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments with us today. And I'd like to ask Mark to give us, you know, an overview of the Jump Start Program, and then he can also answer some questions about that as well.
Okay. Mark Bellantoni, we'd like to invite you to address council, please.
As Ryan said, my name is Mark Bellantoni. I am with the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments, and I run the Upper Arkansas Area Development Corporation and Economic Development Resource Center. As Ryan stated, I'm here today to ask for the approval to Canyon City, for Canyon City to join the Rural Jump Start Program. This program was established by Senate Bill 15282. As Ryan said, it is a tool in that economic development toolbox to help bring new businesses to our area. The program is a tax relief program for these new businesses. It provides relief from state taxes of business income, employee income tax, sales and use tax at the state level, as well as relief from county and municipal business personal property tax. This program is jointly administered by three different state entities, the Office of Economic Development and International Trade, the Colorado Economic Development Commission, and the Colorado Department of Revenue. Businesses wishing to participate in this must be new businesses locating to the Rural Jump Start Zone, so in this case, the city of Canyon City in Fremont County. They must not compete with any existing business located in the state of Colorado, and yes, that is the entire state of Colorado. They must pass what I call the new and innovative test, which encompasses the point prior of being new to the area and not competing, so they have to be providing a different sort of service outside of the typical industries we find here in Colorado. And then additionally, they must be endorsed by an institute of higher education. In our case, that is Public Community College, that has been designated as R-I-H-E. Eligible counties must be designated as rural and economically distressed, as defined by the Economic Development Commission. At this point, I think I'd like to turn it over for questions, and I'd be happy to answer any of them.
Okay, are there any questions from council? Looks like we have Councilmember Meisner.
I have one.
Okay.
On this tax relief, in particular with the county and municipal business personal property tax, is there a sunset on that, or is that for eternity?
Oh, that's a very good question, Councilmember Meisner. It is initially a four-year period, and businesses can reapply for an additional four years. So in total, the tax relief, both state, county, and municipal, all of it, can go for a maximum of eight years.
So it mentions county in there. Is the county signing off on this same thing?
Yes, sir, they already have.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from city council? I can't see everybody, so speak up if you'd like to ask Mark anything.
So just to follow up on Jim's question, what this does also is that no new businesses may be added to the program after December 31st, 2020. And so there is essentially a maximum of eight years that we might be doing this for any particular business, and that no new businesses will be added after this year.
Correct, and if I may just add something onto that, Mr. Hamrick, is that they are entertaining the possibility of, I guess, what they're reapproving the program. So to allow businesses to continue to apply to it and be approved, I think until 2022 is what they are considering right now. But there are, there is some legislation in the works that may extend that approval date or submission date.
Mark, if that legislation is passed, does that mean that you'll be back in front of us for another resolution?
I would guess so. It would depend on what the program rules were, but my initial gut feeling says most likely, yes.
Thank you.
Mark, is there locally any active work going to recruit, to recruiting businesses that are new to the state of Colorado that could take part of the Jump Start Program here in Canyon City?
So yes, I'm currently working with two businesses here in Fremont County. One of them is based out of Canyon City, and the other one is based out of Fremont. Though we do actually have two potential applicants to this program right now.
All right, and is there active looking for, through the rest of this year as well? I mean, this is an amazing incentive for new businesses.
Absolutely. As new businesses are brought to my attention, I very much encourage businesses that think they may meet the criteria for this program to get in touch with me, so we can put in an application or rather explore the possibility of them putting in an application. I am absolutely recruiting new businesses to this program for the rest of this year. The first step was getting the resolutions passed, because I had to have a program to get them approved for.
All right, yeah, I'm pretty excited to pass this resolution and to help promote business incentives to Canyon City. I love this program. It's pretty exciting. Any other questions from city council? Then I would like to entertain a motion. Go ahead, Councilmember Meisner.
Madam Mayor and council, I moved that we approve Resolution 11 of series of 2020.
Is there a second? So Brandon Smith was the second on our motion. Is there any discussion?
Did you say, did you say item 11?
Well, it's Resolution 11, series...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I was just, I heard that.
No, that's good to clarify. Let's go ahead and call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Beethneth?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Right, it has passed by unanimous vote, and thank you, Mark, for all of your hard work. We really appreciate all that you, all that you do. I do see that we have, maybe before we leave this... Oh, this is about a comment, and this is just one example. This comment is from Kim Piner. "I think we should give tax breaks to existing Canyon City businesses who are going to suffer from the coronavirus outbreak before new businesses. Loyalty should go to current businesses in light of everything happening." So just for some clarification, now, Mark, do you want to give some clarification as far as this new tax breaks? That's coming from the state of Colorado.
Absolutely, yeah, I saw that comment as well. And I think my response would be that we are looking into providing some sort of relief for businesses at the state level from some of the Colorado I am on. This program has been in existence for many years, and in no way, shape, or form in response to the coronavirus pandemic that is currently gripping our community and impacting our businesses at a level at which I did not know was possible. We are doing everything we can to help these businesses. This particular program is not designed to help them, unfortunately. However, it was created long before this pandemic started in an effort to continue to stimulate the economic growth of rural Colorado. So I very much appreciate your comment, Ms. Piner, and I am working on it as hard as I possibly can to find some sort of relief for our small businesses.
And that's the same for us as well, Mark. We are also working really hard on how to support our small businesses and keep them alive. Number one and foremost is that we need to be purchasing from our local businesses, if we can, if they're restaurants, to do, carry out, and if they are doing any sort of online Facebook or phone call sales with delivery or shipping, to please take advantage of that. We also have some other projects underway to help our current businesses. Ryan, do you mind just, since we're on this topic, just giving some highlights that there are a ton of tax incentives and tax breaks for businesses that are provided through the state of Colorado and that we're doing as a city?
Yeah, I think, you know, you mentioned a lot of the good, a lot of the ones that we're working on. With the CARES Act, there are certainly some opportunities for the Payment Protection Plan and then the disaster, individual disaster relief plan as well that came out from the federal government. The state government has helped coloradownow.org, which has a lot of different programs and grants that are being given out to small businesses. We have relaxed a lot of...
Yeah, the grant.
Penalties and fees on some of our remittance for sales tax and things like that. So we are looking at all the different options that we have available to us, and we will continue to work and reach out to our businesses to let them know what's available.
Yeah, absolutely. We are working really hard on that. Councilmember Reed, did you want to add anything to that? You are also on our task force for supporting businesses.
I think that because the situation is so fluid, we really appreciate the feedback. So I appreciate the comment that Kim posted on our Facebook during this. And that small business Facebook page that we have has been a really good opportunity and tool for the business owners to be able to get together and have these kinds of conversations. One thing that I think that we're learning is that something that helps one business may not be the most helpful for another type of business. And so continuing to have the conversation to identify the struggles that each unique industry, as well as our businesses, are having. For some, it's cash flow. For others, it's that maybe they're seasonal, they're not open yet, and going to be opening soon. And so being able to provide additional marketing information and help when they are open and this is over, which hopefully will be soon, we're counting down the days. And I think, again, just having those conversations and understanding that there's just not a one size. It's all a new situation. Understanding the CARES Act and having conversations about that is also really important. I'm really excited that Ryan and his team and Brandy have been able to reach out and to be able to provide resources for our businesses that I think that a lot of communities don't have, the ability to have an in-house grant writer willing to walk alongside our businesses to help them understand the CARES Act and who to contact. We've got lenders that have stepped up to be able to explain what they're going to be able to do on the SBA side. We've got accountants and CPAs willing to explain what the ramifications of some of the stimulus packages is going to look like. I think we have a really good team altogether working for this, but I would encourage anyone listening, if you have an idea, if there is a blind spot that we have that we're not aware of, please share it, because that's truly the heart of the city. The heart of the community is to be able to come out of this on the other side, changed, but hopefully stronger.
Thank you, Mandy. I really appreciate that. And I think a lot of, maybe just the general population, they're expecting to get like their $1,200 check in the mail to help stimulate the economy, but what we're talking about is completely separate. So we have that for the general public. That's from the federal government, but then there's also a slew of other resources and grant opportunities for businesses themselves to be able to make payroll, to pay rent, and...
Get the grant opportunities, which one you want.
But with that, we'll go ahead and probably close number 12A. And again, thank you, Mark, for all of your hard work and being a partner and all of that as well. I think we'll be talking support a lot in the future.
Yeah, thank you.
We're going to go ahead and move to number 12, and that's the electrical service Royal Gorge Park Campground. I'll invite Ryan, our city administrator, to present to us, please.
Okay, so item 12 is to add electrical service to the campground. We received an estimate from Black Hills that is $11,834.19. There's an additional 21, approximately $2,100 that will be needed to install the electrical service panel. So the total project is about $13,934. I do want to point out that this project was not originally budgeted, but we do feel that it is important for having a campground host up there. The campground host receives, you know, they're paid $300 a month during the season as well as free campsites. Because this wasn't budgeted, we do have other cost savings built into, that we've identified from the budgets. There was $40,000 that was originally budgeted to put fencing in to keep cattle out of the Royal Gorge Park. It looks like our fencing efforts last year were very successful, and we're not seeing any cattle coming in right now. We're continuing to monitor that situation. And then there's also currently a balance of $30,000 that we originally looked at doing that fourth trestle, and we are not moving forward with that project. So there is some budget savings with, currently built into the budgets that would allow us to accommodate for this project.
Ryan, before we go to questions, I think I might be good to comment why we need to have the electricity there and the campground host itself.
So we looked at having, you know, some type of security or even partnering with the bridge to have their park rangers go out and check the campground, make sure that, you know, number one, that it was safe out there. People were putting out fires and things like that, campfires, in order to make sure we didn't have any other, you know, wildland fires that occur out there. One of the solutions that we eventually came to was actually having a campground host on sites on a daily basis to make sure that the campground is being taken care of, be able to answer, you know, some questions and point campers in the right direction, and ultimately make sure that site is safe and that those campfires are being put out on a regular basis.
Jim Isner, I see you have a comment?
Well, my, I guess I have two points. One is I get a little concerned that we got a project that we're looking at that wasn't even part of our budget. And then, second of all, considering the potential reductions that we're going to have to make this year, is this really a needed project?
So this was a project... This was a project that was not budgeted, but we did, you know, feel it was necessary. We did put it forward before the COVID crisis really took hold. You know, eventually we will need electricity out there, but if we are going to collect payments out there, and again, you know, not knowing what's going to happen with the COVID, stay-at-home orders, and when people are going to be going out and allowed to go camping and things like that, again, we certainly have a lot of questions in the air right now, and I don't know that I can answer some of those questions at this point.
If I remember right, Ryan, also another issue we're having is squatters at the campground where they're only allowed to stay for two weeks, but they were staying indefinitely. And we've invested a lot of money into these new campground spaces and feel like they needed to be protected and monitored as well.
Absolutely. That is certainly another issue that we need to address as well and having the campground host out there will certainly help with that as well.
Do we have any other comments from council members?
Well, it's going to be the hour for that campground host that we're talking about because we talked about the people coming in there, staying overnight and all this stuff, because the hours that that person is going to be there is really significant. Say they're only there for two or three hours and they leave, you could still have some of the problems we have right now with people staying there and not leaving.
Yeah, the campground hosts will actually be living onsite during the season. So they'll be there, you know, throughout the season.
So they're going to have housing up there?
That's primarily what this electrical is for, is so they can have their camper there. There will be a campground host site where they can have their RV vehicle and set up for the season.
And our camping will be charged and so that will help offset some of those costs as well. Any other comments from council members? Okay, well, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Ashley?
Brandon?
I believe that was Tim.
Oh, okay, sorry. Go ahead, Tim.
That's okay. I can say this, that, you know, I've lived by some campgrounds, especially when I lived up in the Black Hawk area. And they had a camp host as well that brought in their campers and lived there. And, and once the National Forest Service started doing that, there was just, the campground became nicer. I think it's just a great move by the, if we got this done, because it just gives somebody there to monitor them and it really does slow down the bad behavior. So that's, I'm, I think this is a great move.
There is a comment. Valerie, do you want to say something? On my panelist feed, it says, there are numerous campgrounds in the area with a new one just south of this location and if we, we will not be competitive unless you offer electric service. It's a comment that was made.
Yeah, it was just a comment.
So I do want to be clear that initially this is just going to be for the campground host and then we would have the capability to add electric to the sites in the future, but that's not part of this plan right now.
Right, we did have a letter from a constituent saying they don't want electricity at their actual campground sites. They like to have primitive camping. And so right now it is really for the host, but it's something like there's also going to be a place where folks can charge their electronics or their cell phones without using generators, which can also enhance the experience for everybody and maintain the primitive camping. Any other comments? Then I would like to entertain a motion if someone would like to oblige us. Do we need a motion for this one?
I think it's just thumbs up.
Yeah, because, because of the mounts, I would like a motion from council if we can go ahead and do that.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Dolly, please.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution number 11. Nope, I'm on the wrong one. Sorry.
I think it would just be to approve paying for the electric service charge at the Royal Gorge Campground. There's not a recommended resolution.
Okay. Yeah, I make a motion that we approve electrical service to the Royal Gorge Park Campground.
So we had a motion and a second. And I'll call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockens?
With strong reservations, I'm going to go ahead and say aye.
Councilmember Meidner?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Bee Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Hi.
All right, thank you. Jim, I just have to say that your no echoed on my part and it was kind of cool. Okay. Is everyone doing okay? Do we need like a little quick break just to get a drink of water and anything? Just push through? Okay, then we'll move on to number 13. This is to authorize the mayor to sign the Canyon City US Highway 50 West Control Plan Intergovernmental Agreement. This is something we've been working on for a really long time and I do want to commend staff for really involving the city council and the public from the very beginning. I think that has really made a really big difference on this moving forward a lot more smoothly and amicably to our folks on Highway 50. And would like to invite Ryan and whoever else would like to participate in presenting this to us to go ahead and do so.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to turn this over to Adam Lancaster, a city engineer and the consulting team.
So thank you, Mayor, Council. We have online, we have David Sprague, who was the project manager with Atkins. And we also have Valerie Sword, who is the permit manager with CDOT. We have Jason Nelson on the line, who is the Region Two Traffic Program Manager, or Engineer rather, and we also have Art Gonzalez, who's the Access Manager for Region Two. As you mentioned, Mayor, way back in 2018 is when we started this process. And when we made that decision, city council also wanted to portray to CDOT that they were committed to the US 50 corridor plan by funding this access control plan in its entirety. And so we are looking to wrap that up with a final presentation tonight and hopefully approval of the intergovernmental agreement. The study area was from the west city limit all the way to 15th Street. And it was the next step that we needed to go through in order to move forward with some of the plans we have on the US 50 corridor plan and some of our pedestrian crossing projects and other things that we're working on downtown. So here we are tonight after 10 team meetings, two public open houses, and we also had seven one-on-one property owner meetings. And so with that, before we get into discussion on the IGA, David would like to go ahead and run through a presentation, one last final public presentation of this. So David, if you want to share your screen? David, are you on?
Who's doing?
It might be muted.
David?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Sorry for that technical glitch. I will, can you guys see my screen?
No.
Okay, let me try this one more time. Let me know when you can see my screen.
I can see it.
Okay, thank you. So I will, taking the mayor's lead from earlier, I have learned definitely during this COVID thing that I am a people person and working remotely with this technology stuff is definitely proven to be a challenge for me. So I apologize if I have some glitches as we go through this, but Mayor Smith and council members, it's my pleasure to be here tonight and present to you the summary of our study that we did for the US 50 Access Control Plan in your city there. Wanted to just go ahead and get going through this. Hopefully I can get through this fast. I know there's a lot of slides, but I'm not going to try and spend too much time. Maybe there'll be a lot of questions that I can take and we can, we can proceed that way. Just real quickly, before we dive in, I wanted to give a lot of thanks. I wanted to echo what Adam was saying at the beginning and the mayor that city staff, you guys have been great. It's been a real pleasure working with everybody from the past, the previous mayor to the current mayor, to members from the previous council, to those of you on the current council, everybody who's participated in this. I learned along the way, which is always good to say that you can teach an old dog a new trick every once in a while in terms of getting to learn something new. The, the process that we used on this study was unique in terms of having all the meetings sort of set in a public setting, inviting the council to every meeting. And so at the beginning, I was a little concerned about that, but it turned out that it actually worked very well and I was excited that it's something I would like to see myself use in the future on future projects. So just a good kudos to you guys on that and making me get out of my comfort zone and experience that. So the purpose of access control, so these are some generalized, not necessarily specific to US 50 and Canyon City. These are just from research done by the Federal Highway Administration, stuff that comes down to CDOT's State Highway Access Code, just general planning and engineering. The reason you do access control is you want to be able to identify deficiencies in the system and/or areas that can be improved and figure out ways to make them better. We really want to focus on improving safety, mobility and operations and it's not just from automobiles, it's for everybody who uses the facilities, pedestrian bicyclists. We want to make sure that we think of things that would help everybody who's ever going to walk along the road or try to cross across the road. And for those who are actually driving on the road and again, those who are trying to drive across the road too. It's a long range plan, so everyone always asks the question, hey, when are these changes going to occur? And the big thing with an access control plan is it's long range. The plan itself doesn't really identify like when a project's going to occur or when a change is going to occur. It just gives the local city in this case and CDOT the opportunity to have a plan in place so that in the future you can implement changes to help improve and meet your other goals that you have in the area. We recommend the ultimate access condition. So again, we're talking 20, 30 years into the future. A lot of people will see the plan and they'll say, oh, you're, you're closing this driveway. Oh, my gosh, you know, we can't do that. But again, the goal is that it's a, it's a long range. We may not be closing that driveway for 20, 30 years or even never. It just depends on some conditions that we'll go over later on as to when those things may happen. Provide access to the adjacent properties. We always want to make sure, that's one thing that's written in the State Highway Access Code, that CDOT has to make sure that every property adjacent to the highway has at least some form of access. Now, it doesn't have to be direct access to the highway. It could be access to an adjacent roadway that intersects with the highway. It can be a frontage road, it could be a back railroad, it could be alleys, it can be a whole different combination of ways, as long as we make sure we just provide that access. And finally, one of the big things is to enhance the highways' aesthetics. So by eliminating some driveways or moving some driveways or consolidating some driveways, we make the area look nicer so that it's not quite so cluttered and busy and so that that way people in the area who are visiting the area, work in the area, are doing business are more enticed to come back. FHWA actually has done some studies and they've done a couple here in the local area, you know, Colorado area, out in Golden and in Arapahoe County on Arapahoe Road, where they showed that once access control was put into place, that business actually improved along the corridor. It actually enticed businesses to come to the area and, and do their business in the area instead of going someplace else. So who developed this? Like I said earlier, it was a great opportunity to work with the city staff, but I also wanted to make sure I, I give CDOT its recognition to Art, Valerie and Jason. If not all of them, at least one of them was at every single one of our meetings, always at the open houses. They attended all the one-on-one meetings. They were fantastic through this whole process and really making sure that they listened to everything that the city said, the ideas that the city came up with. And so, again, you know, I think that they, they deserve a chance to, to, to take some kudos also for their support and cooperation in this whole process. As Adam mentioned, the project limits were from the western city limits to 15th Street. It's about 2.3 miles, stretches through kind of what we will call the core downtown area along where the river and the railroad are. There are two main segments within the study area. This is sort of getting a little engineering on you here, but I'll do the best here to keep it to the basics, which is the first part is from the western city limits up to about First Street. That's what CDOT classifies as a regional highway. And in that section, the focus really is just more on traffic mobility. It's not intended to have a lot of development along that stretch. It's not really intended to have a lot of driveways. It's really starting to get more into the rural areas of the, of the county and outside the city. And so it really becomes more of a focus on traffic and less a focus on providing access to every individual property. From First Street to 15th, it's what's called a non-rural arterial. So it's really, you're kind of in a core city area, core downtown area. This is where the State Highway Access Code comes in and says, hey, in here, we would like to do a better job of balancing the needs of traffic mobility with the need to provide access to properties along the corridor. And so there's some trade-off in some areas where there'd be more access provided, but in other areas there may be less access and we look for more mobility. And again, it's not just automobile mobility, it's all mobility. So how was the plan developed? We followed a process. It's a process that's outlined in access manual, access code, access management manuals. It's a process we've used many times. You collect data, you evaluate the data, we develop alternatives. We have a lot of meetings to screen those alternatives before we come up with a preliminary one. Then you go to the public and so the whole first five steps there is really where the town and CDOT really worked well together to listen to each other and come up with ideas and present different concepts of ways that we can improve access and mobility in the corridor. Then we went to the public. After the public process, we revised our plan. We went back to the public one last time to give them another opportunity to view it, comment. And then we finalized it, which is what we are here tonight, hopefully to do the IGA. So the rest of the presentation will sort of follow this roadmap here and we'll kind of step through and identify how, what we did kind of in each step and how each of those steps was completed. So access conditions along the corridor, there's a lot of different types of access you'll hear me talk about, so I kind of have a little picture here. If I, if I mention something later on, hopefully you can remember this. Full movement just means, you know, hey, you can, you can turn in any direction, there's no limitation on turns. Three-quarter movement where we might limit the amount of left turns, maybe left turns in, but no left turns out of an access or a driveway. And then of course you can go to right in, right out, which is where, just exactly what it says, only right in and right out turns are allowed. So when we started this, one of the first steps was the data collection. So we went out and we collected the data. In the study area, there are 130 individual access locations. That's driveways, curb cuts, roads, you know, you name it. It's anything that crossed the right-of-way, CDOT's right-of-way that created 130 access locations. Of those points, 25 are what we would, about 25% of what we consider public streets. So First Street, Third Street, Fifth Street, the public roadways. The rest of those are public, are private driveways. So it's just driveways into individual businesses, shared lots, parking lots, fields, what have you. And so that's kind of the makeup of, of the two types of accesses along. Under existing conditions today, almost every single access along the highway is full movement. There are no turn restrictions. There are a couple driveway that are like entrance onlys or exit onlys, but for the most part, all the access points along the corridor today are pretty much full movement, which obviously means that there is a lot of turn movements going on the highway at a lot of locations. Which obviously means that there is a lot of turn movements going on, on the highway at a lot of locations. And finally, the, within the study area, you have three existing signals which are located at Third, Ninth and Fifteenth. So these signals are the. The locations that provide the safest location for vehicles to complete turn movements. It's also. The only designated locations along the highway where pedestrians have the ability to cross using a traffic signal. So they can push the button, get a walk sign, go across the road. Same thing for bicyclists. It's really the only three locations within the study area that are specifically dedicated to providing a crosswalk and, and that, that. Movement under the control of a traffic signal. So the next thing we did is we collected safety data. CDOT provided us five years of crash data. You can see the dates there from July of twenty thirteen to twenty nineteen. During that timeframe, there were. Two hundred and seventy-nine crash events within the study area. There's actually two hundred and ninety. There's a few that are located. A little bit further to the west here, but I didn't include, I just included basically from tunnel drive over. There's two hundred and seventy-nine in here, two hundred and sixty-nine were vehicle-to-vehicle events. There were ten. Events involving either, either a pedestrian or a bicyclist. Those are designated as the blue. There was one at second, one at third, bicyclist at fourth. There was a mid-block crossing here that involved a pedestrian about. Between fourth and fifth. And then another one at eighth. There was both a ped and a bicycle at ninth, a ped and a bicycle at eleventh, and then finally the last pedestrian accident was at Fifteenth Street. Almost all of these pedestrian events involved a pedestrian trying to cross US fifty. And they were usually struck by a vehicle that was making a turning movement. And most times it's a vehicle making a right turn movement is what is, but it does show that there is. A need because you can see two, three, four, five, six of the ten events were at locations that currently do not have a traffic signal. So there are people trying to cross the road and there are people who are looking for. Places to do that. Other safety notes, just to highlight some of the safety stuff, crashes involving it, as I said, involving a pedestrian or bicyclist. Was usually crossing US fifty at signalized, unsignalized locations. Which goes to show that there are, there is a need maybe for more crossings, dedicated crossings along the corridor. Whether it's dedicated crosswalks, traffic signals, traffic signals would only be installed obviously if they were warranted. But definitely something that if we, if we could get to needing more of those and it definitely shows. That, that that might help some of these events. The vehicle-to-vehicle events, those that are signalized intersections. Were usually turning, turning vehicles, being struck by vehicles coming through. All of the signals in town allow vehicles to turn left on a permitted. Permitted movement. It's not protected by a green arrow only. And that's usually when those events occur. So. It may mean that the signals might need to be adjusted to only be considered to be protected only, or it may need to be some, some improvements to some of the signal timing. At unsignalized intersections, the, the, the reason we have so many events there is traffic on US fifty is pretty high during the peak times. Vehicles have a hard time being able to turn left out of those side streets or try and drive straight across US fifty. Which those vehicles are getting struck broadside, which are the most severe type of events that you can have. Ones that we definitely want to get rid of. That is definitely something that indicates the support to minimize the number of turn movements allowed and/or look at. Locations where maybe signals could be warranted in the future. And finally, the mid-block events that are occurring between vehicles is an indication that there's just a lot of driveways. Vehicles are slowing down usually to turn into those, or vehicles will turn out. In front of people approaching that don't slow in time and they strike, strike the rear of the vehicles. And so maybe looking at minimizing or optimizing number of access points would help us to, to eliminate some of those types of events. And finally, on safety conditions. Conflict points are what causes events. You can see in this point here that at a full movement intersection, we have thirty-two conflict points. And as you begin to reduce. Access or movements, you can see three-quarters drops it to fourteen, writing right now drops it to eight. It's very important to notice that this includes pedestrians. You can see how they have the crosswalks drawn on the picture. And so it includes pedestrian movements. And so these are all the conflict points. That exist. And so by. Optimizing access, optimizing design, optimizing the way it is, and maybe we can help reduce the number of conflict points, which in turn will help. Reduce the number of accidents that are, that are occurring along the road. Mobility conditions. We already talked about the three intersections with traffic signals and how that's. That's good, that, that's the best place to turn, but that also means there's only three along all of the intersections that we, we looked at. Existing traffic operations, that's how, you know, we talked a little bit about that in terms of side streets right now have a little difficulty turning out on the US fifty. Almost every single intersection from Ninth to Fifteenth right now during the peak times, the side street level of service is E or F. Which is something we want to avoid. That means that vehicles are having to wait for a long time. To find gaps to turn into, and that's something that we definitely want to avoid. And conditions are probably worse during peak seasonal days, weekends, kind of peak seasonal days. That probably exaggerates the issue even further. So with all that said, there's not really necessarily that it's not, that there's an immediate need for changes, but it's definitely something that we should start planning for. More signalized intersection, more unsignalized intersections are gonna be getting to fail as traffic just gets higher and higher. Congestion's gonna increase, mobility for vehicles is gonna decrease. Pedestrian bicyclists are gonna have a much harder time crossing the road as traffic grows in the area as more development occurs. During peak times, it just becomes more, it's gonna become more difficult for pedestrians, bicyclists to move around. And eventually, the studies that FHWA did where they looked at roads that did not have access control, it actually showed that there are. Instances where businesses suffered because people were just, didn't want to have to deal with. That environment, didn't want to have to come to a place where it was congested, busy, crowded, didn't feel open inviting. And so that's something that we definitely want to avoid too. And so definitely all of this, after we kind of did our data collection, it supports the need to consider the optimization of the, of access on US fifty in the study area. So we developed ideas as we're moving through our flow chart. We kind of came up with some preliminary ideas. We use these. Types of methods. I'm not gonna step through all of these because there's a lot of information here, but. You know, we, we tried to take advantage of some of the local streets. We looked at. Realigning some accesses, moving them so that they made better sense. We consolidated it. Some properties had two, three access points and we were like, you know, maybe we just. Consolidate down to a single access point. We looked at ways that we could take advantage of the side streets, maybe some other roads that we could provide access off of. And then another option was the addition of median treatments, although we didn't. Make the recommendation necessarily directly through the access control plan to install medians. It is something that we know that the, the city is considering under other projects ongoing. And so we did take that into consideration as to. If medians were going in, how could we best use those medians to achieve the, the optimized access that we wanted to achieve in our study? Next, then after we developed our plan, we took it to the public. We had a total of. There were a lot of different things we did from a public outreach, as I mentioned at the beginning. We had ten meetings. I think Adam hit on that at the beginning. And again, those meetings were great. They were open to everybody. We had a lot of participation. It was, it was very welcome and, and received very well. We even had general citizen, just general Joe Public walked in on a few of the meetings and, and listened in and sat down. And so it was very, very interesting to have that, that approach. We, we'd also conducted two open houses. One in November, which is where we presented our draft plan. It was just a chance to introduce what we were doing to the public, say, hey, here's our first effort at what we think we're gonna do. Or what we're gonna recommend. And then we got feedback. And then on March, or sorry, February twentieth, we did our second one, which is where we presented the final, final plan. Both of these were very well attended, I thought, both by city staff, public, or there was more than fifty public people at, at both of these meetings. So it was, it was very well received. We sent out about. I forget the exact number right now. It's just my, I think it's over two hundred and seventy-five roughly invitations to individuals along the corridor, anybody who directly. Touched the corridor and those, those adjacent to the corridor. And so we got really good attendance in our, in our public meetings, a lot of good comments. We, we had one-on-one meetings then, as, as Adam also said at the beginning with property owners. So at the first open house, we, we listened to individuals and anybody we thought. Sounded like they needed a little more personal attention or a little bit more one-on-one talk. We set up meetings with them over a two-day time period. We had a total of seven meetings after the first open house and a single meeting after the second open house. And so all of those meetings went very well. It was, it was a great exchange of information and ideas between. The property owners, members from city. CDOT was there, so it was a great exchange of information. And then finally, we also had a, the city maintained a website that we were posting all of our. Exhibits from the open houses, all of our information, all of our boards, everything is up on the open, up on the website. And so overall, you know, from a public outreach, I, I think we, we definitely achieved what, what, what it needs, needed to be. Went a little above and beyond, I think, with some of the meetings and, and I think in the end it was very well received overall. So what does the final plan do? It does create a long-term plan like I mentioned before. So again, this is not something where we, it does not identify, you know, specific projects. It, it provides a planning document for the long term. It optimizes the locations for all modes of transportation. It does not just, we did not just focus only on automobiles. We did as much as we could to make sure we were supporting the vision for US fifty that the city has established through all your studies. And that was key to having the city participate in all of our, our meetings and, and really make sure that we were. Not doing anything that was contradictory to anything that you guys had done in the past or looking forward to doing in the future. We've provided the appropriate level of access to all adjacent properties, again, whether it's through direct access, shared access or through other means. We've, we've met all the requirements of this State Highway Access Code and I say that hoping that Valerie doesn't jump in and. Say we didn't, but I believe we fully met the State Highway Access Code. We, we addressed all the concerns raised by stakeholders, every one of the meetings that we had, if there was anything that came up in those meetings, we. Got to a resolution with the individual. And so the final plan has taken into account all of the stakeholders and all of their concerns. So we, we have addressed all of those. And it creates the opportunity to enhance alleyways and parallel roads, you know, it just, there, there's ways that the city can look in the future to help. Implement some of the access control by making a few improvements to some, what are dirt, dirtways now, maybe making them into a little bit nicer. Roadways, better well-defined and that would definitely help implement the plan and also help the overall improvement in mobility. What doesn't the plan do? The first bullet there, like I said, we, it does not identify specific projects. So again, this is a planning document. It's not meant to say, hey, go do this or go do that. It's just. When changes are necessary, the intent is to have the city and CDOT refer back to the plan and say, hey. We need to do something in this area. The plan identified doing this. Let's do this in this area, or at least, at least consider doing that. It does not establish a timeline when the changes will occur, like I mentioned at the beginning. Everyone always says, well, you're gonna do this tomorrow. You're gonna do it then. Until there are reasons for doing something, changes don't usually occur. It does not include the design details of what the accesses will actually look like. That'll be done at the time that the actual. Changes are made. There will need to be a study done at that time and it'll decide, hey, where does the driveway, what does it look like? What does the road look like? What changes actually need to be done? It doesn't impact your current planned projects. Another big one is it doesn't prohibit future amendments to the plan. If something happens, the city. Or CDOT or somebody comes up and says, hey, we need to make a change to the plan. It is not something that's etched in stone. It is something that. Can be changed and the process to do that change is laid out clearly in the IGA and the supplemental materials. And it is something that has been done in the past on a lot of access control plans around the state. So it is not something that is difficult. It's just a process that just needs to be followed. And finally, probably the most important one is it definitely does not preclude the, the future development or redevelopment occurring along US fifty. In fact, that is the one driving factor that once development or redevelopment occurs, that is what will drive home the need to. Implement access control on the corridor. So implementation of the plan, exactly as I was leading into, it's a phased approach. It's very unlikely, I don't think I've ever heard of it occurring, that it would ever occur as a single project. Would require a huge amount of investment and something that I just don't think that would ever happen. Again, it represents a long-range vision. Currently, there are no identified state or federal funding to implement the improvements at this time. And there are no identified projects at this time, other than what the city is working on with its pedestrian study. Which then could be used as a trigger to implement portions of the plan, certainly not all of it. The next bullet is probably the biggest takeaway of the whole presentation tonight. Sorry it took so long to get to it, but the triggers for implementation include. A traffic operational issue. If something happens at an intersection that is a traffic concern. CDOT will, will, will take a look at it. We'll perform a traffic study or the city can perform a traffic study and that's when. Changes will need to take place. That would be one of the triggers that would, would cause parts of the plan to be put in, into action. An increase in safety concern. If indeed there's suddenly a lot of crashes involving either pedestrians, cars, what have you, again. A study would need to be done and parts of the plan could be implemented or, or, or what have you, or other changes need, would need to be, take place. If a roadway improvement project takes place, this is where your median project and your pedestrian safety study comes in. If the city does move forward with that, then that is a great opportunity to, at the same time, implement some of the changes. That are recommended in the plan at the same time as the roadway improvement project occurs. And finally, anytime development or redevelopment occurs along the corridor. That really is the driving factor behind most access changes along a corridor. That's when CDOT and the city should work together, look at what's in the plan, work with the developer and say. We would really like to implement our recommendations in this area. Please set up your site plan accordingly. And that usually then works out well for everyone and, and that's how the plan can get implemented. And again, the last bullet there, the city's pedestrian mobility project would be a, a good opportunity, probably the first opportunity to implement some of the plan. So the next steps, adopt and sign the intergovernmental agreement. That's what we're all here for tonight, hopefully. Everyone has enjoyed the process, participated in the process. Enjoys or at least is on board with what the recommendations are. The city will get its final documentation. You'll coordinate then between city and CDOT to make sure the plan gets implemented whenever possible. And then in the future, if you need to, the plan can be amended. So. The next five boxes there in the light blue are all what we're hoping get done here in the next. Week or a couple of weeks here, and then it really then becomes a long-range plan that can get implemented over time. So in summary, the expected benefits are we're gonna improve safety down the road as pieces of the plan get put into place. Every conflict point that we can eliminate is a way to improve safety, improve mobility. Helps identify locations in the future, maybe where more traffic signals can go. It allows the pedestrian crossings to go in. It definitely helps. Identify ways that we can improve mobility for both vehicles and pedestrians. Improves your planning process. It gives you guys a nice document that you guys can work together, CDOT and the city, as development redevelopment occurs. And then hopefully economic, improve economics in the area, again, with the improvement of the visual appeal of the highway, decluttering the highway. In the long range will actually lead to an improvement of conditions and business along the corridor. And so that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, David. We really appreciate that and the work that you've put into the US Highway Fifty Access Control Plan. It's, it's a pretty major project. And, and you really did go above and beyond to open it up to the public and city council from the get-go. Again, we appreciate that quite a bit. Does Valerie or anyone from CDOT want to make any comments about the process or the outcome?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Ashley, can I interrupt real quick? This is Frank.
Sure, Frank.
I hate to go, I hate to leave, but I gotta.
Yeah, I hate to go, I hate to leave, but I gotta take care of some of my wife's medical needs before she retires and that. So I have confidence in the rest of my council members that they'll go ahead and take care of everything that needs to be taken care of. And I did appreciate the the invocation that the gentleman gave, it sounded like everybody did a good job of that. But please email me tomorrow to let me know the final outcome of the rest of the meeting, please.
Thanks, Frank.
Thanks, Frank, and our best wishes to your wife.
Okay, bye bye.
Me?
Yes, we're back to you now, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. So I just wanted to say that this experience is has been different than any of the other times I've gone through this process. I think that it was educational for for all of us. And and it pleases me to see a city council that is so interested in in what is going on and what is proposed and genuinely looking out for the the best for their constituents. So I appreciate your partnering and your interest in this effort, I appreciate David and Adam is always a pleasure to work with. I always know he is very aware and we work so good together for so many years on access issues. So thanks for all of all of the city staff and the city council and and the mayor for your time and attention to this.
Thank you, Valerie. I'd like to open it up to city council if you have any questions or comments. Be happy to hear those. Again, Tim and Brandon, I can't see wave your hand up, so just, you know, pipe in if you have something to say. We will start with council member Meisner, please.
Excuse me, I have a number of mainly statements, but maybe for the the new council, understanding that to get to the process that we're at today was a was a long kind of a long haul for some of us, a previous council. In that the the East Canyon or the East Highway 50 access plan was developed by staff and the engineer and the engineering firm and C dot. And essentially, that plan was kind of presented to council with what I'm going to consider to be a minimal amount of constructive input, which didn't set well with most council. Ultimately, we wound up not accepting that plan, which because that plan had a substantial grant from the Transportation Department, that did not set well with them and I understand that. And I believe that it was the previous council's intent to fund the West Highway Access Plan ourselves so that we could in fact control what we wanted to do. And and the fundamental thing there was is that we wanted to start the plan with public input, with property input and with councils input from day one. And I applaud, one, our our own in internal staff for at least listening and accepting that from council. And to the C dot staff and to the engineering staff, which previously had kind of taken the attitude that, well, it really doesn't work like that. For those people to kind of step back and say, okay, we're going to try a different approach. And I think that that particular approach from day one with getting all the parties involved and having that open discussion made a huge difference in terms of the fact that in all likelihood, this plan will get accepted. So my first thought goes out to all of those people to thank them and to kind of educate council that we got here because the first process didn't work very well.
Thank you, council member Meisner, and I will wholeheartedly second all of your comments. I think we have had a long history with this and I'm really happy to see the process this time around. Any other questions or comments from council members at this time? Dolly Gonzalez, please.
So I just wanted to extend gratitude for, you know, the last project that that came forward. We didn't pass it through and there was concern that this one might come to fruition. And I I just want to say thank you for everybody who's been on board at working with us and working through what what were our frustrations before and making sure that that our our voices were heard through this process. So, thank you.
Council member Meisner.
Well, this is kind of maybe the David, maybe C dot. Did we finally get? I'm going to call it a reasonable solution or some consensus as to how we're going to handle the, I think it's Fifth Street and the access to the Big Daddy's area?
Yeah, this is this is Dave, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so and and I would certainly welcome Adam's input to this too. Yes, I mean, we we did follow through with our second one on one with them. You know, we explained everything to them as much as we could that, you know, we were we're basically providing them the maximum amount of access that that we can provide them for the for the long term. And again, we kept reminding them that their changes are going to be more driven by what happens with your pedestrian and the median study and that in front of their property than anything that we recommended in the access control plan. And that their driveway there, which which they have now, right in the middle of their property, you know, we numerous times we we hit them in the meeting and and talked to them about how long term that that driveway is going to get reduced to something less than full movement. And so we we presented a whole bunch of ideas to them about, one, how they could do internal circulation changes that I think at the end of the meeting, in my opinion, I think they started to see that there are different ways they could approach both their internal circulation. And then also how we had outlined, you know, they have Fifth Street, which will always be there as a as a full movement intersection, maybe signalized one day in the future, it's hard to predict that because it has to meet warrants. And that probably their other access, which would stay there as a right in, right out in the middle of their property is probably going to become something less than full movement at some time in the future. And so, you know, I think we did a good job of prepping them, saying, I think it needs to be a give and take on both sides in terms of what they can do internally to make things work better. And then what we did to make sure we maintained as much as we could maintain for them for 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 as long as we could.
And council, councilman, we also assured them that, just as we've assured you, that they will be part of the design process as we move forward with the actual construction of the improvements. And so, you know, they they did express and and said they were possibly going to attend tonight's meeting to express that they really didn't want any change, of course. But we did assure them that during that final design process, they will be integral to that, to make sure that that it's it ends up being something in final design that we can all live with.
Yeah, and and we also let them know too that, again, like I said, you know, this isn't etched in stone. And so if the the design comes up with something that's different than what we show in the plan, then it's just a simple amendment to the plan to then match what comes out of the design, what comes out of that ultimate design phase.
I would like to point out too that a lot of people are asking, why, why are you even doing this? And it's really important to say that, number one, this is a phase one for us to be able to keep moving forward with some solutions for safe pedestrian crossings across Highway 50. As you noted in your PowerPoint presentation, there's been a number of people getting hit by cars and also car accidents along that way. And it is really scary to have pedestrians crossing Highway 50. And this is the beginning of setting that up to be able to create those safe, potentially medians for crossing and also to connect the downtown to the riverfront as well. And it's also to simplify the excessive amount of access points from First to 15th Street. And we already have some businesses that have said, hey, you know, I really like this plan, can I go ahead and make the changes now? And we actually do have some 50 50 match programs for those businesses that are interested in doing that that we can that we can help with that. And part of that is that turning, you know, what was a driveway entrance into a sidewalk and having more ADA accessibility too. And so I just wanted to point that out as well. Anything else from city council? Council member Meisner.
But just in conclusion, I just want to reiterate, considering how obnoxious or honorary I was before, I I want to again congratulate Adam and the engineers and the C dot people for at least listening to us and trying an alternative. I really appreciate you people kind of stepping out of your comfort zone and trying something different. Thank you.
And and even beyond that, compromises were made, adjustments were made along that whole process. And if there were concerns, they were listened and they were changed as best as they could be done. And that's something else we appreciate. If there aren't any more comments from city council, I would like to ask for a motion. That would be a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the IGA agreement for the Canyon City US Highway 50 West Access Control Plan.
Mayor, council, I move that we approve for the mayor to sign the Canyon City Highway 50 West Access Control Plan Intergovernmental Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we had a motion and a second by Brandon. Is there any discussion? Then I will call for a vote, please.
Council member Dennehy.
Aye.
Council member Gonzalez.
Aye.
Council member Meisner.
Aye.
Council member Reed.
Aye.
Council member B Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemrich.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes with unanimous vote. And C dot, I want to say that this this is a huge stride forward in our relationship and working together and getting the West Access Control Plan done and and maybe some hopes that the that small heartbeat for the east control plan can still is still beating. And we would like to move forward as appropriate with new developments coming. So I think this is exciting. And when there is any triggers, then we'll be ready to move forward at a reasonable rate, which those triggers could be those medians and pedestrian crossings or services. Let's go ahead and move forward to number 14 and that's consideration and adoption by title only of Resolution 6, Series of 2020, entitled Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, authorizing the sell or resell of water by the Water Department by retailers. I think that just my thing is that cut off within the city of Canyon City. And Ryan, are you doing the staff report on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do the staff report. So we were recently approached by a water vendor that was interested in establishing a standalone filtration water station to resell city water. And under section 13.04.16, section A, section two of the municipal code, it it does not allow for the reselling of water furnished by the city, even though we do have a couple of entities that are currently doing that. So what we looked at and we we worked with the city attorney to, you know, come up with this resolution to allow the sale of water in smaller quantities. So this would not be affected by our bulk water station, but it it would be effective for, you know, this standalone water station vendors like Safeway, City Market, Walmart, who all have water stations within their facilities and they're effectively reselling city water with additional treatment. So this this resolution would allow that under the code for small quantities.
Are there any comments or questions from city council? Council member Jim Meisner.
My first question would be, are are these resellers, at what rate are they going at?
At commercial rate. These would be these would be based on commercial taps.
And the commercial rate is less than the bulk rate?
Yes.
Or more?
Less than.
Do we, do we have an idea as to what kind of quantity the current retailers that have those water stations, how much, how many gallons there can they're reselling a month?
Yeah, Bob Hartman did that research and that's where we got the 2,000 gallon number. It's so that we were able to capture them and what they're currently doing.
Isn't 2,000 the residential limit also for the base?
No, I think so, I think we sell things down to 1,000, I thought, for residential.
And you, I mean, we potentially got a vendor wanting to do this and are they comfortable with the 2,000?
Yes. So, so, yeah, so what happened is we had someone approach us in this, we looked to, we looked to the code and we we actually found that it was already happening in practice and it hadn't been happening for decades. This guy did it right by coming and asked permission first. And then reviewing the code, we found out then to do it right, we need to come ask you permission to do so.
So what happens if they, what happens if they exceed the 2,000?
We'd shut them off. Or come back to you and ask you if you wanted to extend it higher than 2,000. But 2,000 exceeds what the large retailers are already doing. This particular gentleman, I don't want to give out his his business plan, but he's he's looking to locate it in a place that's closer to some of the park water customers that are that are having to travel to the large retailers to get water.
Will you be contacting other folks that may be using this city water and reselling it so they know if they need to be permitted?
Yes, I mean, this is basically this basically legalized what's already happened just with some and then we we contact him and let him know he's he's okay to go forward.
Any other questions from council?
Well, I'm still just with, I get concerned about the 2,000, but I guess that becomes an issue in the future, then then I guess we come back and look at it.
Yeah, what we what we wanted to try to do with this resolution was kind of capture everybody in place now and then allow this guy to to get started with his business rather than come create something where we're coming and asking for individual retailers for a resolution for each. We want to try this 2,000 out and see how it works and then go from there. But we have had a large interest in the last year or so of these types of businesses. We've had a couple business people want to do ice, they want to sell, you know, they want to manufacture ice and some of those self-contained ice machines. Yeah, and so they would fall under this. And and again, the 2,000 captures what those people gave us for projections on use.
Adam, this is Brandon. You're talking about like five gallons at a time, right? That's
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Where's the five gallon limit?
It's not, it's the five gallon limit comes from their apparatus, their their actual vending machine. I have not seen one that exceeds a five gallon container size. It's it's something that can somebody can fill up, I'm sure you've seen people use the one at Walmart or City Market. Where they they pull up to the to the machine with their empty jugs and they fill them up. And then they leave with those and this is not a bulk, this is not a bulk water cell. Very, very small amounts of water.
Most of the machines I've seen, they do it in one, three or five gallon increments.
Yeah, there's not a hose on these where they can drag a hose over and fill up a truck or something like that. You, you have to stick your bottle underneath the spigot. Yeah, there's not a hose on these where they can drag a hose over and fill up a truck or something like that. You, you have to stick your bottle underneath the spigot.
Okay.
Get your quarters in.
Any other questions?
I mean, if everybody's comfortable with the 3, the 2,000, it just seems low to me, but if that's what makes sense.
Well, it exceeds what currently Walmart and City Market and Safeway are selling. That's where we, that's where we came up with that number. We went and interviewed them and then gave some cushion.
So can I ask a question on top of that?
Yes, absolutely.
Is this a, you know, like in larger cities, they have them outdoors and you can pull up into a parking lot and fill it, fill it like that. How, what are the sizes of those? Is it comparable?
The business question, the business question is is planned to be an outdoor one, not where you have to go in the store. It would be at a storefront, however.
Okay.
But yeah, that's that's what we're talking about, as well as some of these others that would be standalone, like kiosk in a parking lot.
So those are made to handle a larger population than than typically what we have. So in comparison, it'd probably be plenty. I was just trying to make.
Yeah, we're basing the 2,000 right now off of off of current data. If it needs to change, it's by resolution, easy to do.
I see some wisdom in just starting here and then moving forward as we can to be business friendly. Jim Meisner?
Just quickly, Adam, do you? I mean, if I had three of those fill stations, you know, like the automated ones that you see, would would I be limited to 2,000 as a retailer of all three of those, or would each one of them be allowed 2,000? What's what's your thought?
Each location.
Okay. I don't have any more. Thanks, Adam.
I think we're ready to accept a motion for item number 14. Now, go ahead, Councilman Gonzalez.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 6, Series of 2020, resell, sell or resell of water.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then I'll call for a vote, please.
Council member Dennehy?
Aye.
Council member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council member Meisner?
Aye.
Council member Reed?
Aye.
Council member Bee Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
All right, the motion is carried unanimously. And thank you, Adam, for your work on that and for accommodating the new business in town. We're always happy to hear that. We're going to move forward to item number 16 now, and that's the introduction and frustrating by title only of Ordinance 5, Series of 2020, entitled, In Ordnance of the City of Canyon City, Amending Sections 2.64.035 and 2.65.040 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Meetings of and Vacancies on the Library Museum Advisory Board. Ryan, would you like to report to us?
Yes, the Library Museum Advisory Board has made a unanimous vote recommending that city council makes these changes. One of these changes is to go from having monthly meetings to having no, having quarterly meetings or no less than quarterly meetings. So they would have the opportunity to have more than quarterly meetings if they had enough business. One of the things that we're running into right now is there's not enough business on a monthly basis to require those monthly meetings. The other aspect of this is to loosen up some of the requirements in regards to selecting and filling vacancies on the board. And we just recommend making those appointments based off of experience and previous experience on local organizations and associate associations supporting the library and or the museum. The previous ordinance, or actually the current ordinance currently specifies specific organizations that we would seek experience from.
Any questions from council members?
I had a question, but he already answered it in terms of what item B was required.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, uh, thank you for that clarification, Ryan, because the, when I first looked at this, I was assuming they were moving in the other direction rather than going from specified organizations, that they were adding additional qualifications that that were making it more restrictive. And it was, and I would point out that 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 my misapprehension was because we didn't have a red line. But.
Yeah, no, I I understand that. That's why I went into so much detail.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That's my comment.
And if there aren't any other comments, I'd like to entertain a motion. Council member Meisner?
Madam Mayor, council, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 5, Series of 2020.
Is there a second?
That would be on first reading?
Yes.
On first reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Then I will call for a vote, please.
Council member Dennehy?
Aye.
Council member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council member Meisner?
Aye.
Council member Reed?
Aye.
Council member Bee Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Excellent. It has passed. And it was the last item on our lengthy agenda tonight. We did get a lot of work done, so.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah?
Why aren't the clouds behind Catherine moving? They looked just like that an hour and a half ago.
Well, the waves aren't crashing on Dolly's either.
Okay, good point. Dolly, it's done.
Before we do adjourn, while we've been in our meeting, Governor Polis did make an announcement. The stay at home order has been extended till April 26. So Canyon City, we can make it through this. We can do it. We have to. We need to. Please make your masks and put them on your face and use them. You need to be as safe as we can and responsible and considerate of those around us, especially when shopping. But stay at home as much as you can. The sooner we can to contain this virus, the sooner we can get out to normal life again. And I think a lot of us are talking about putting together a post pandemic party for the entire Canyon City. And I am really looking forward to an opportunity to get out and celebrate with everyone and be able to be humans again and socialize. So let's do this. We're resilient. We're strong, and we can do this. And take care, Canyon City. Be safe and be healthy. We are adjourned.